Saying that we can postpone the election as long as it occurs before June 30th. However, this year it's the at-large positions with North Middlesex. We have to do it in conjunction with Pepperell and Ashby. And as of yet, they have not set a date. So if we could just postpone the election, date to be determined is enough to satisfy the state. And once we know the date of the election, we can post that. Um, we have to give notice to the public 20 days before the election happens. So you can't wait till the end of June to set it for the end of June. It would have the last day to set would be June 10.
Okay. So can I be added just add any discussions with Pepperell or Ashby?
I have, I've had some conversation with my counterpart in Pepperell and they were looking at the originally at the first week in June, but they've determined that that's not going to be feasible. That's why Kathy's asking now that if you take a vote with two parts to it, one is to postpone and the second is um to a date certain. And that date to be determined by the town clerk in consultation with our um partner communities in the school district.
Okay. Um, Don, do you have anything to that?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm in agreement with that one.
Okay, uh, can I get a motion then?
I make a motion uh that we postpone uh the annual town election to a date to be determined.
And I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Um, you said there's a second part to that, Jim?
Yep.
Can you repeat that?
Um, well, I think you covered it with a date to be determined by the town clerk.
Well, there was a, there is another part of it. Um, one of the things we are allowed to do is to lessen the mo- the amount of hours that we're open, that the polls are open to the public, um, as long as we're open four hours. However, our agreement with North Middlesex Regional School District has it um that we have to have the election from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. But I'm curious to know if we would be able to have a town council look at that to see if we can lessen the hours. We are required to have early voting by mail for this election. So we shouldn't have as many people showing up at the polls. And that would give us extra time to process the um early voting ballots. So I don't know if that's something you would consider looking into.
Yeah, um, Jim, if you could reach out to council and see what they have to say about that.
Absolutely, absolutely. Um, without, without you having to meet again, if council determines that it is something that can be done, I think a vote authorizing the clerk to set the hours if approved by council.
With the other two towns.
In coordination with the other two towns, then we won't have to reconvene if that gets determined, you know, tomorrow or Monday or something, won't have to reconvene the board to set it.
Okay, um, Don, can I get a motion on that then?
Sure, um, I make a motion that uh we reach out to council to determine if uh we can uh reduce the hours of uh our town election. And if so, uh, set that date within consultation with our town clerk um to have to be posted.
And I'll second that. All those in favor?
Don Klein, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes.
Excellent.
Um, okay, town meeting, what are we gonna do with that?
Okay, town meeting, you can postpone the town meeting. That's been given a little more leeway with that. Um, 30 days after the set meeting, I believe. We can go ahead, but then we can also ask for an extension after that.
So June, June 5th is a given with the vote of the board. And if things are still not resolved, we'd have the ability to go further. So at a minimum now, it would be a vote to postpone the annual town meeting until June 5th.
Um, you got a problem with that?
Wayne, you're breaking up, I couldn't hear you.
I, I don't have a problem with that.
He doesn't have a problem with that.
Okay, uh, I don't have a problem with it either.
Okay, um, can I get a motion then?
Um, I make a motion that we tentatively move the town meeting date out to June uh 15th.
June 9th. Oh, June 2nd? June 2nd.
Okay, June, June 2nd would be the date that is um 30 days out, the closest Tuesday.
Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion that we move, tend to move the town meeting date out to June 2nd.
Uh, second. Uh, all those in favor?
Don Klein, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. Okay, is that all for that?
We're all set with Kathy, yep.
Okay.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thanks, Kathy.
Great, thanks for.
Okay, section three.
3.1, discussion regarding the appointment of interim police chief Jay Sartell, the permanent police chief. So Don, I had left that with you um last time as I had a couple of questions for Jim, which I had asked and answered. Um, so I'd love to get your feedback and what do you want to do next?
Uh, I have no problem with Jay. I, I feel we should uh appoint him the full-time chief.
Okay, uh, I, I feel the same way. Um, I, I think he's a very strong candidate. He's um done a very good job in the last three months, especially with this um mess we're dealing with right now. Very good leadership, so. Uh, can I get a motion?
Uh, just one quick question though before I do. Uh, we'll need to sit down with him at some point then after we make this official um to negotiate his contract. Shouldn't that be in the motion too?
Yep, I was gonna recommend, I just jotted it down, subject to the successful negotiation of an employment contract.
Okay, I make a motion that we appoint uh, excuse me, Jay Sartell to the position of the permanent police chief uh upon completion of a successful contract negotiation.
And I'll second that. Any discussion?
Not for me.
Um, neither, um, I, well, I do have a question, Jim.
Yeah.
In these times, are we able to have an executive session remotely and negotiate as well or?
We can, yep, the same, the same rules would apply um to any other public meeting. So we meet remotely, it would be recorded. Unlike um an open session that you have an obligation to put up online within 24 hours, an executive session, you'd have an obligation to put it up 24 hours after the purpose for which the executive session was called no longer exists. So in that case, it would be if a contract is successfully negotiated, once it's negotiated and signed, the exemption no longer applies, so we would put that up within 24 hours.
Okay, um, second part of that question, this issue is, is this, is there a rush to do this, given the state we're in right now?
Well, I don't, I don't think there's any more of a rush given the state we're in now than there would be if we weren't. I think it's just a case of if the board is inclined to do it, I think it, it just shows good faith and, and support to just have the vote.
Okay, um, I'll, I'll talk with you about that, setting that up um in future days. Um, do we have to ask Kate Bob as well?
Um, she, she and I have spoken and she is prepared to be involved at whatever level you'd like.
Great, all right, uh, ready for a vote, all those in favor?
Don Klein, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. Welcome aboard, Jay. Uh, 4.1, discussion vote to extend due dates for real estate property taxes until June 30th, 2020, and waive to excise, waive the interest on excise taxes. Um, Jim?
This is um pursuant to the relief order that passed the House and Senate and was signed by the governor. So you have the ability to give people the extension on the due date for taxes and to waive the interest, uh, interest and penalties on excise. You don't have the authority to waive the date or push the date for excise, but you do have the authority to waive the interest or penalties.
Okay, so that's essentially the same thing as extending it without extending it?
Correct.
Okay. Um, Don, questions?
Uh, just one, Jim, how are we financially if we're pushing out uh due dates for excise and enhanced uh real estate taxes?
Well, there, there is uh a discussion on cash flow that I was going to be bringing up under my report later. We can have a, a bit of it now with your question. Um, we rely on real estate tax, obviously, for a, a significant portion of our revenue. We rely on things like um food, uh, restaurant tax, meals tax. So we are realizing a hit in terms of our cash flow. On a conference call with the lieutenant governor last week, I did ask the question if they had any guidance or recommendation for communities that as they approach the fourth quarter of the fiscal year and cash flow isn't living up to what was projected because of this, um, how that should be handled. And the recommendation was that the communities are authorized by law to do revenue anticipation notes or RANs and that they would recommend we pursue that. So basically what you're doing is doing a short-term borrowing in the marketplace in anticipation of receiving the revenue. The expectation is that the real estate revenue will come. There is no expectation that the um, the food revenue, the restaurant revenue would come because it, it's not as though people are going to eat two meals a night once this thing clears up. So that, that's going to be lost to us, so Lori is doing that analysis now.
Okay, uh, the only other question I would have around this is if we do uh approve this, then uh I think we need to pursue all avenues to get this out there uh to folks and then let them know that if they can afford to pay it, you know, there's a, there's a significant amount of people that are still working.
Yep.
That they really need to pay their, their taxes now because it would put us in a very difficult cash flow problem if they didn't.
Absolutely. And we, and we are seeing a very steady flow of payments on excise. Um, so it, I, my, my, my assessment on this would be that you wouldn't see an extraordinary number of people taking advantage of this push date. Um, but for those that need it, that want to pay but don't have the ability right now, it, it is a, a pretty significant offering to them.
Yeah, I have to agree with that.
Yeah, because those are the questions I was getting from a couple of my friends that are unemployed. Um, that they just can't pay it right now, so. Um, okay, can I get a motion done?
Yes, uh, I make a motion that we extend the uh, the due date for real estate and personal property taxes to uh June 30th, is that the right date, Jim?
Yes, it is.
And the second part there?
Oh, so the second, I'm sorry, the second part is to waive the interest in, on the excise tax.
Um, uh, interested in, in penalties or just?
Correct, interest, interest and penalties, yep.
Oh, I'm sorry, it says just here, interest and penalties.
Um, I'll second that, a, a definite motion. Um, any more discussion?
No.
Okay, uh, all those in favor?
Don Klein, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. 4.2, discussion vote, implement a spending freeze for non, all non-essential positions and expenses. Um, can you, this reads kind of dire.
Um, it, it's, it's intended to, um, it goes to, to the point that Don brought up a moment ago. If we are anticipating a cash flow issue and people have discretionary um line items in their budget and there are things that they would like to do with their budgets that they're not required to do and aren't mission critical, this would require that those not be done without prior authorization. So the opportunity to see if it is, if it's salary, obviously, that's an obligation. If it's contractual, you know, utilities, things that we know are, are not discretionary, those will get paid. If you've been intending to buy, you know, new filing cabinets for your office, that's not. And we would want to pull back on those expenses that are, are not um things that are absolutely critical right now, mission critical right now, just until we see towards the end of the year how the cash flow is looking.
Okay, so this is not, not paying people salaries for?
It is not, I'm glad, I'm glad you brought that up because um I, I did have some communication with the representative of um the APSME union groups because the way it was being read by some apparently is um, it says discussion vote to implement a spending freeze for all non-essential positions and expenses. Um, the non-essential position is really talking about a salary, excuse me, a hiring freeze. So unless it's an essential position like a police officer or a firefighter, um, if it's a non-essential position as has been determined by the governor's office, we would have a freeze on filling that until we have a better sense of what revenues are going to look like.
Okay, yeah, does the water commissioner fall under?
The superintendent is a critical position, that is, that, that, that happens.
So we'll continue to move forward with that. Can, can we make sure that the, the board of water commissioners understands that? Um, because that, that's obviously an important position.
Yep, I, I think, I, I think I've had some email communication with Rebecca on that. Um, i- if I haven't, I'll make certain that I do today before I, I head out of the office here.
So, so Jim, how do, how are we going to make sure that the department heads um aren't uh judging their, on their own, what is essential and what is not essential? Is there some, some kind of criteria that we're gonna hand out to them?
Well, the memo itself discusses payroll, utilities and contractual obligations. So if it's anything other than that, it's gonna come in through this form. And, and there'll be, there'll be uh kind of a, an all points bulletin going out to departments after the meeting indicating that this vote has taken place. They'll get a copy of the memo and the attached um requisition sheet.
Okay.
Uh, can I get a motion done? Is she happy to do something else?
No, that's it.
Okay.
I make a motion that we implement a spending freeze for all uh non-essential positions and expenses.
And I'll second that. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye. Don Klein, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. 3, update discussion regarding legal expenses.
Yep, just want to um kind of fly this up the flagpole. We are uh coming on three quarters of the way through the fiscal year and we are currently over expended on legal by coming on $19,000 and change. Um, this, this, Wayne, you and I have spoken about this a little bit along the way. Um, there are matters that require the legal expense. Um, I don't think you can look back and see where anybody has been trying to utilize legal in any frivolous fashion. Um, but I wanted to just get that on the radar screen because that's going to be an issue we'll need to address at town meeting eventually.
Can we, um, do we have some uh funds available that we can put towards legal? Or we gotta take it from free cash through uh town meeting?
Lori, it, again, that's one of the other reasons for the spending freeze. Lori has identified line items where we have had appropriations in place but have not had the expenditure that had been anticipated. So the uh, the expectation is from interdepartmental transfers.
Okay, because the, what, what, uh, just so that you, I'm clear, I have a concern that right now, more than ever, we're going to have to rely on um council as we go forward for things, uh, especially with what, you know, what we're, the gov- comes out from the governor's office around this pandemic and what we need to do going forward. Um, I hate to see us in a position that we don't have enough money to pay council for, for getting that.
Yeah, I, I, I share that concern, Don, I don't think it'll be an issue. Um, ultimately, the, the bill will get paid and a certain portion of the bill that can be shown to be attributable to the pandemic actually is something that will likely be a reimbursable expense, which I'll have a better sense on at 3:30 today, so in, in about 14 minutes when I get on a call with MEMA.
Anything else, Don?
No.
I'm good with that one too. Okay. 4.4, review, approve, authorize the town administrator to sign memorandum of agreement for the Middlesex Regional Safe Keep program.
So this one, the, the memo in the packets explains it pretty well. Um, it's an opportunity for us, in very limited circumstances, to be able to avail ourselves to the Middlesex County Sheriff's Office um lockup. It's a pilot program called Safe Keep and the uh, the, the chief has been working with them on this program and is at the point now where he is making the recommendation that we move forward with it. So this would be an authorization to um allow me to sign the document to allow our police department to utilize the Middlesex County um lockup if necessary.
Okay, um, Jay, uh, I'm sorry, Don, do you have any questions?
No, I read through the document and uh I, I don't have a problem.
I read through it and I talked to Jay as well about it, so um it, I think it's a good program and we should be part of it, so. Can I get a motion?
Sure, I make a motion that we uh approve and authorize the town administrator to sign the memorandum of agreement with the Middlesex Regional Safe Keep program.
And I'll second that, all those in favor?
Don Klein, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. 4.5, review, approve, authorize the town administrator to sign for the acceptance and approval of bylaws for the Townsend Community Access Media Inc. Jim?
Yep, on this one, um, this goes back far longer than it should. Uh, this is the, the legal documentation to create the public access cable nonprofit. Um, you authorized the Cable Access Committee to engage with council. Um, they had several fits and starts with doing so, they finally got somebody that they got traction with. This uh, this information in your packet now is the incorporation documents and would be recommendation that you approve and allow me to execute. And they can file it with the Secretary of State's office and we can get this thing moving.
Uh, Jim, just, just one quick question on this. I noticed that in the uh, the note here that it says bylaw, doesn't that have to be approved at downtown meeting first though?
No, it doesn't actually, um, it's, th- this is outside of the uh, the corporate governance of the town. So the term, the term bylaw is used not in the same way that a local bylaw would be.
I don't have anything else, you done?
Nope.
Okay, can I get a motion then?
Sure.
Please.
I make a motion that we approve and authorize the town administrator to sign for the acceptance and approval of the bylaw for the Townsend Community Access and Meteor Inc.
And I'll second that, all those in favor?
Don Klein, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. 5.1, town administrator updates and reports, take it away.
Yes, bear with me a second while I fumble through my papers here. Uh, all right, so one of them is the, there it is, sorry. One of them is discussion regarding the maintenance tech position. Um, the maintenance positions have been deemed to be essential by the governor, so this would not fall under the recently voted um hiring freeze. Don, you had asked that this be revisited when uh you and I spoke at the end of last meeting, so that's why it's appearing on the agenda now. So just looking for the sense of the board regarding either moving forward with the process to fill this position or continuing to leave it vacant.
Uh, well, from my perspective is that I had hoped to leave this until the Collins had finished their um, their report. But uh, given the situation we're in right now, I think that it's, it's prudent to have another, another person on staff to help with all the cleaning that we have to do. Um, so I'm, I'm willing to forego my original um, uh reluctance to hiring somebody and, and say that we should put, put a person on now. I don't know how you feel, Wayne.
No, I'm the same way, um, I mean, it's a very important position right now. I know the buildings aren't being utilized for the most part, but um, we gotta be ready for when they are, so I, I agree with you.
Excellent, I will, um, it, it, it doesn't take any vote or motion, I will get that process going and get the posting up. Excellent, and then a couple of very brief things that have happened since the posting of the agenda. Um, one, I referenced a few moments ago that there is a call with MEMA, the Massachusetts Emergency Management Association uh agency, um, coming up in about 10 minutes. And it's going to be describing the um, the governor's declaration of this being a disaster, this, this pandemic, and what that means in terms of reimbursements from the federal government through MEMA. So um, we've got everybody keeping track of the expenses that are attributable to the pandemic in the off-chance that um this is to, to go forward. So I just wanted to make that known to you. The next is the?
Jim, one, one quick thing on that?
Yep.
Um, I've been through these declarations before and uh it has got to be stressed to all the department heads that they really need to keep track of that because uh we had problems in the past not getting the appropriate reimbursements because people weren't tracking what they should have been doing.
Yep, e- everybody is aware and has been since we had our first department head meeting several weeks ago now in anticipation of this.
Okay.
Excellent, um, the state also put out um an outreach to cities and towns saying that they had the opportunity for us to access um GoToMeeting, the video conferencing platform. And I have a call at 5 o'clock today with our listed contact from the state on that. Um, you'll recall at your last meeting, it was directed that we find an appropriate platform to be able to hold video meetings that would allow public access and public participation to the extent that the board chose to have public participation. Um, there's been a lot in the press recently regarding a couple of very popular programs that were being used by um government entities, schools and cities and towns, and concern raised about the fact that people were able to hack into the, the meetings and some uh, some untoward things were happening in, in school meetings and classrooms and the like. So um, we're steering away from that and instead looking toward um bringing GoToMeeting online. So I'll have more for that after I have the call this afternoon, a little later this afternoon. That is being made available to us at no expense.
Yeah, Jim, if that doesn't work out, um, Skype has a, has a new update for their security system and that might be an alternative, they have a business uh entity for, for Skype.
Yep.
And I told that the gentleman that owns Zoom, I, I follow Zoom because I'm, I'm an investor.
When did you, did you get in early?
Yeah, I got in real early.
Good for you.
Uh, he announced that they have done some security updates, but I would, I would want to see what those security updates are before we even contemplated going that. But those are things to keep in the back of your mind.
Yep, yep, the, the, the way the state program is being rolled out is unlimited number of meetings, unlimited minutes per meeting, so, a- and at no expense. So some of the things we would bump into if we went out on our own are avoided by doing the state one. So I'll, I'll, again, I'll have more after I have the chat this afternoon at 5:00.
Okay.
And then lastly, um, departments have been doing weekly reports. We're now one week into the um, the town hall being shut and the governor's um order regarding essential personnel. So those are being compiled and each Friday you'll get a listing and um we'll find a way to, to make it available to folks through the website as well that have an interest in seeing how we're still conducting business during this, this unprecedented time. So I just wanted to make you aware of the fact that uh, you know, you've got a, a really, really strong group of department heads and employees that are, um, even though they might not be in the same seat or behind the same counter that you're used to seeing them, that doesn't mean that they're not still working really hard and, and keeping the place moving.
Good, so, so on that note, one quick question is, we have a kind of a? Good. So on that note, one quick question is, do we have a kind of a sense of what's working and what's not working that we've implemented so far?
Yeah, and that's what we'll see in the reports as they're coming in. Right now, the one issue that we needed to tweak a little bit is the treasure collector's office. The idea of being able to work remotely through, you know, a virtual private network is preferable, obviously, to having people out of their homes and coming into a building and having to interact with anybody on, you know, on the way from point A to point B. But we run into the fact that we have a drop box where people are physically dropping off payments, and you can't scoop that stuff up and take it home with you. So you do need to be in the building, at least on a semi-regular basis, to process those documents, those payments. It's just, it's not good practice to be taking those things to your house. So that's one tweak we're making.
Are we alternating folks being in the building?
We are. Yep, we are. An example, Carolyn and I, Carolyn is by and large taking, I'd say the morning shift, but she's doing more than that. She's taking the morning and then staying into the afternoons. I'm not coming in here until afternoon. So I'll stay afternoon into the early evenings. You've got the treasure collector's office rotating on who is going to be coming in and grabbing the mail and the drop box. You've got the clerk's office, who is working a schedule right now between herself and the assistant. So definitely, people are rotating such that, you know, you're not bumping into or interacting with one another to the extent that it can be done.
Yeah, what's next?
That's all I had.
What about the signed documents?
Oh, you're absolutely right. Thank you. That's on the other side of this page. One of the things that's being done in a lot of communities during this period of time, in order to keep the pieces moving without having to convene meetings, normally you'd be able to come in and execute documents. It's being advised that we not have people coming in and out of the building, to the extent that it's not absolutely critical or necessary. So this is a request to allow the town administrator to execute documents on behalf of the town with the approval of the chair. So it's not having me signing things willy-nilly. It's if there is something that requires execution, I would speak to the chair, talk through with the chair. Again, if the chair deemed that it was something that should go to the full board, we'd schedule something. But if it was routine enough that the chair felt sufficient with having had the conversation, then we'd be able to keep that paper moving without having to drag people in to physically sign things.
Okay. I don't have a problem with that, do you, Don?
Yeah, I don't either. The only other question around that would be signing payroll and bill payable warrants. I know I haven't seen anything from Carolyn this week about signing either one of those documents. Are we still doing that, or?
This would cover that as well.
Okay.
Okay. Can I get a motion done? Please.
Uh, how do you want me to word the motion on this one?
Authorize the town administrator to execute documents on behalf of the town with the prior approval of the chair.
I make a motion that we allow the town administrator to sign documents with prior approval of the chair.
Until further notice?
Until further notice?
Yep, perfect.
All right, I second that. All those in favor?
Don Klein, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes.
Excellent. That's all I had. Got to jump on a conference call in 30 seconds.
Okay, I did have one quick one. Kim Craven reached out to me before this meeting, wanting to coordinate the DEO with the town, anything we can do to help them with resources or whatnot. They're delivering about twice as much stuff now than they have been. So any kind of coordination we can do with our office, I appreciate it.
Excellent. I did, on a similar note, I did have a conversation with Jim Smith, the highway superintendent. And much to his credit, he was asking if there's something that his department can be doing to be of assistance that's not usual and customary for them to be doing. So that might be something we can talk about with the, you know, use of the hybrid vehicle that Jim has. Maybe there's a way to assist with some delivery.
Okay, great.
So I'll reach out to Kim on that.
Okay. Don, anything on your end?
Not right now.
Okay. I think we're done then. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion that we adjourn at 3:35.
And I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Wayne Miller, yes, too. Okay. All right, thanks, Jim.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Stay safe.
You, too.